Of Commissioners, Willie, Trees, Phi, Snyder, Harrington, we are all set. I'm going to suggest we change up the agenda this afternoon just a tiny bit. And do one portion of leadership communication now, and that is to have the CWS Leadership Communications. Diane, get off versus sit through the rest of our Washington County stuff.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good afternoon, Board of Clean Water Services. A couple of announcements, the first one's a cybersecurity update. I informed the Board of a State Agency that was having some difficulty. Clean Water Services did get some suspicious emails that appeared to originate from that agency that our cybersecurity system caught and we were able to block. So I hear that agency is back and running again, which is all great news. Last week, we had C WAC, our Clean Water Advisory Committee, and thank you Chair Harrington for being there and providing comments and seeking feedback from C WAC, and they really appreciated that. During that meeting, the engineering team did present the West Basin Master Plan, which is our comprehensive look for the next 20 years on our treatment and conveyance infrastructure to serve Rock Creek Forts, for the Rock Creek Facility and the Forest Grove and Hillsborough Facilities. So we serve more than 400,000 customers in that basin, and it's residents of Hillsborough, Forest Grove, Gaston, North Plains, Cornelius Banks, and portions of Beaverton and unincorporated Washington County. So it's a comprehensive study. C WAC had a subcommittee that focused on the plan, and they presented on their engagement and ideas that they had as related to how we prioritize the project. And in June, they'll finish their review of the final plan, and then they'll make a recommendation to the Board for Board Action later in the year. Our Natural Systems Stewardship Program wanted you to know that they just completed their fiscal year 25 planting season. So each year, they coordinate the purchase, storage, and delivery of native plants to enhance, to the enhancement of projects across the watershed. And one of the big projects is having to rent, organize, and operate a refrigerated warehouse or something known as a cooler to store their 600,000 bare root native trees and trubs between October and March. So a total of 730,000 plants and 11900 pounds of seeds were distributed this year, representing the most diverse variety of the native plants for this planting season. Yesterday, I accompanied the Chair to the Chair Mayor's Meetings for a short period of time, and I appreciate that opportunity, Chair, thank you. Your budget will be out and delivered on Friday, April 18th. So there'll be a Reader's Digest sort of version of the budget for all of you and for the Budget Committee. And then they wanted me to tell you that on Saturday, April 26th, they're going to have a, will have a spring plant giveaway as part of the Dia de los Niños celebration with Central Cultural in Cornelius.
I'm a little confused about the budget and a Reader's Digest version. Could you run that by us again?
Right, it's, so you'll have the budget, and then just something with the Reader's Digest to point to all of the changes.
Oh.
Like a compass, kind of a navigator.
Okay. For both pieces. Yes, I misunderstood that we were only getting a Reader's Digest.
Oh, no, no, no.
That doesn't quite fit.
No, we're giving you a navigator.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet. Okay, well, thank, does anybody, does anybody have any questions for, can I go to Dennis today?
Nope, great, thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will pick back up with the other agenda items. Appointment to the Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee, ERMDEC.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Todd and Sherry both had conflicts today, so they sent the B Team. I'll do my best, I'll do my best. Exactly, exactly, thank you. So I'm really excited, actually, today. We do have one member appointment for the Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee. His name is Ron Webb, and Brian is seeking appointment to a four-year term that would expire in September 2029. He is a civil engineer and is currently the, I believe, Development Manager for the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. So I think he'll bring great experience to the Commission, and we're really excited to have him coming on board. And he lives in the Aloha area.
How lucky are we?
We are very lucky.
Yeah, to have someone with such a professional background, willing to join, join the committee. That's great. Usually people don't want to stay in the domain where they spend most of their working, working days. So that's, it's pretty, pretty nice, pretty slick, so. Any other questions from Board members? Terrific, well, then that appointment will come to us.
I believe May 6th.
Okay, but his appointment will be retroactive to May 1st. I'm reading this paper right? The front page?
That is a great question. Oh, yes, I think, I think our initial intention was to have this in front of you before the May 6th meeting, but I believe that might be the next business meeting that we actually could get it on the agenda. So it'll be coming and potentially retro.
You guys, are you saying you have an ERMDEC meeting on the 6th? We have, we have a board meeting next Tuesday, so you can always add it.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at the schedule. I don't think there's any issue with it being on May 6th either, so.
Okay.
But yeah, that, and that may well have been a, on the May 1st date.
All right, no problem.
Okay.
I was just like, hey, if we can do it sooner, great.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's terrific, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, now we are really going to sink our teeth into something that we haven't had the benefit of before. Ms. Angie, the countywide service level inventory update.
Yeah, so I would ask the team, join us, Marnie Kyle, and. Thank you, it just, it was a name evaporation from my head.
That never happens to any of us.
And my best friend.
My best friend, Jordan. So as the Chair had indicated, and I'll turn it over to Marnie. This is the county's first ever comprehensive service level assessment. And the team will walk through the executive report, and then we will talk about, and they'll share how the Board will get access to the more in-depth data. So with that, Marnie.
Thank you, Tanya, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board. For the record, because you all know, but my name is Marnie Kyle, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators. Today, Jordan Henderson and I, from, Jordan from Marina and Company and I are here to present those final, the final report from the service level inventory and the assessment. A project that began, as you all know, in late 2023. So I affectionately refer to this project after I inherited as SLAW. And perhaps SLAW can explain why it took some time for us to reach this point. So basically, we took a head of cabbage, shredded the strands, and then we described what it's made of, what flavors are included, and why we appreciate SLAW. And some people brought purple cabbage and others brought iceberg lettuce. And so it, it was quite the undertaking, but I'm really proud today to present the project, which thoroughly describes Washington County's services. While it represents a point in time, it provides us all with a clear understanding of what the county does, why we prioritize certain services, how those services are funded, who benefits from them, and where are the services provided. So with that, I will turn it over to Jordan, and he's going to share what we've learned about our Washington County services.
Thank you. Yeah, good afternoon, Chair, Board of Commissioners. Really excited to be here, like Marnie mentioned, my name's Jordan Henderson, I use he/him pronouns, and I'm a partner with Marina and Company. And we've had the privilege of partnering with the county on this effort. There's an enormous amount of work that, that goes into what we're going to present, and we're excited to bring it forward to you today. So the purpose of today is to bring back the outcomes of an 18-month process. And before we, we get to what the outcomes are, want to remind the group about the overarching project purpose and objectives that, that we've been carrying forward from the beginning. Want to do a quick overview and reminder of the approach and the work that went into reaching the point where we're at today. And then talk about what the results are, what are the outcomes of the service inventory and the service level assessment, before we talk about use cases. So we'll present what some of the high-level outcomes are, talk about some of the data tools that are available now, and then have a little discussion about use cases and what some of the immediate next steps for the work are. So from the beginning, the slide may look familiar to some of you. We've been consistent about what the overarching purpose and the discrete objectives for the work are. At the highest level, the purpose of this project was to develop a comprehensive inventory of county services, complete with corresponding service characteristics. And the work was split into two distinct phases with specific objectives. Phase one was focused on developing a service inventory, which at the highest level was trying to answer the question of what does the county do? And then Phase two, the service level assessment, focused on describing the service level characteristics of those services along five key areas. And so the five key areas are geography served, as in where are services provided? Community served, how is the service provided, and who are they provided to? Equity, how is equity being centered in the delivery of services? Funding, how is it funded, and what's the cost approximately? And then mandates, as in why are we providing the service? And because there's an enormous amount of complexity and data that goes into quantifying services, we've been clear from the beginning in trying to communicate what's in and out of scope of this work. And so when we think about what's in versus out of scope of this project, the things that are clearly in scope are developing that comprehensive list of services and then developing that service level baseline. This project did not assess level of community need for services, did not make recommendations on service levels, not rank or prioritize services, nor did it make budgetary recommendations or present budget options. So how did we get to this point? At, at the last work session, sort of the midpoint check-in with, with you all, we went into detail on what the approach looked like. And so this is, this is a high-level depiction of the process that, that we went through with Department Leadership and Staff. And although it appears linear, it presents linear on this screen, the work was very iterative. And anytime you're doing something for the first time, you, you learn things about the organization in the best way of, of categorizing services, and that's what we learned along this process. So at a high level, Phase one, the inventory began with some research and information gathering to understand best practices for talking about services in a governmental context, before bringing that to an internal oversight team that was convened to provide guidance on the framework moving forward. And that framework was used to begin some high-level conversations with Department Leadership to begin casting a wide net, putting a list of services together, so that we could bring that list forward to Department Staff, Service Leaders, and focus groups to have more detailed discussions about how we'd go about identifying service while also being able to answer some of the questions that come next related to service levels. And so this is where the iteration comes into play, because while we're working on inventorying services with Department Staff and Leadership, we're also working with the Department Leadership, Executive Leadership, and Department Focus Groups to understand what questions we want to answer related to the service characteristics. And so after defining those key questions, we brought that information back and tested that with Department Staff to arrive at what we deemed the right level of detail to inventory services, as well as a specific list of questions around those five characteristics that we wanted to answer in the service level assessment. With a better idea of those questions, we developed a survey tool online, tested it with Department Representatives, as well as internal subject matter experts on data and data equity, and arrived at an online survey that was distributed to Departments all across the organization with somewhere between 20 and 30 specific questions, trying to gather information related to those five service level characteristics. After answering those questions over a period of several months, we had a comprehensive set of data at our disposal and began a process of working with Department Leadership and County Leadership to evaluate the answers, take stock of where different interpretations of our characteristics may have been played to arrive at something that insistently, to the best of Department's abilities, captures our key service characteristics that were desired as part of this effort. And that's our data review and validation process that has led us to the point of being able to finalize that information and summarize in some data tools and a final capstone report. So what are the results? The results of the service inventory is a list of services, inventory of services, identified across 23 departments and programs across the county. This is the list of departments and programs included in that inventory, organized by portfolio area. And when you look at the, the final inventory, we arrived at a number just under 300, so 297 total distinct services across the county. And this is broken out by the number of services identified per department, color-coded by those portfolio areas. And one of the key things to note about this is that when we asked Departments to identify their distinct service lines, while also being able to answer and untangle complicated funding streams and mandate requirements, what we realized is not all services will be inventoried, inventoried at the same level. And so what you see here is sort of a high-level depiction of where certain departments, so most, you know, notably Health and Human Services, has a much larger number of services to be able to capture the distinct things that they're doing, as well as untangle some of the questions around funding streams of mandates. And so we'll go through sort of a countywide view of trends in, in the service characteristics, but it's important to remember that not all services are of the same size. So what does the outcome of the service level assessment look like? And before we get there, I want to just frame out what the questions were that we asked. And so when we think about the service characteristics we were after, we have five of them. And underneath each of those characteristics, we worked with our internal oversight team and Department reps to, to clarify the specific questions we wanted to be able to answer, and to be able to answer across a really varied spectrum of services. So for mandates, for every service, we wanted to be able to answer the question, is the service required? And if it's required, we want to know by what? What's the type of requirement behind the service? By who? Who is mandating or requiring the service? And then at a high level, is the county fulfilling requirements? If the service is not required in some way, then why? What, what are the, the reasons behind providing a service? For funding, at the highest level, we wanted to know approximately how much does it cost to provide these services? And what external revenues are provided? And if there are external, external revenues provided, approximately how much? And are there restrictions that can attach with those? And then what percentage approximately of the funding for this service comes from County General Fund? For service delivery, we wanted to know, does the county provide this service directly or through contracts? And who are the direct recipients of the service? Are there specific community groups or focus groups? And then are there eligibility requirements for providing or accessing services? For geography, the primary question is where is the service provided? And if it's provided to incorporated areas, which ones? Similarly, if it's provided to a special district, which ones? And then for equity, I wanted to know from each Department's standpoint, what equity-focused strategies are in place to deliver the service? What practices are in place to ensure equitable access? And then what culturally responsive strategies are in place? And so through the process of answering those questions, there's an enormous amount of information that is distilled across the, the county's portfolio of services. And what we arrived at was two data tools, two summary tools, that allow you to summarize that information at a variety of different levels. And I'll show you a little bit of a snapshot of what that looks like, and then we can talk about kind of where, how, how to access and those sort of things. But the, the first tool is a service level assessment data table, which is the comprehensive table of those data points for every service that was inventoried across the county. And that's use cases primarily in understanding different characteristics about services, as well as trying to understand trends at different levels, different altitudes. And so kind of the easy, easy way to thinking about it is, that's the full table countywide that you can use to understand trends in service levels. You could also filter by department or portfolio of departments to see kind of trends across services. And then the second data tool is the service level summary, which presents a, a very detailed look into the answers to those questions for a particular service. And so that's really a lookup tool. It's the record of answers to the questions we asked for a service. And so in tandem, we sort of start high-level, build awareness and understanding about service levels, and then drill into more specific details at a service level.
Should we have had access to that data?
We're presenting here first, and then I think have some information.
Right, so this, this afternoon, I'm planning to send you the link and was just gonna, we thought it would be helpful to see what's in the data, how to, how to sort and how to access the data. And then I'll send the link, and just a reminder that it is an internal data source. So it's not a, it's not available to the public, it's on our SharePoint data process, so. And I apologize if you expected it before, but we thought it would be helpful to give the overview and then provide the, the deep dive and offer.
I understand.
Yeah, and, and happy to, we, we are going to offer follow-ups because I don't, I don't, you know, it's, even if, even once Jordan goes through this, once you get the data, it, it's a little bit confusing, so we're happy to sit down with you and kind of help you look around and search through the, the data set.
Yeah, thanks, Marnie. So this is, this is just sort of a snapshot at a high level of what those data tools look like. And there's many, many more data fields and columns in each of these, so this is sort of a zoom in. But when we talk about the service level assessment data table, it's an Excel table with a row capturing service level characteristics for every service that was inventoried across the county. And so there's a variety of different columns that summarize this data. There are summary columns that provide sort of the quick answer to questions, as well as some specific columns that we're calling data filter columns, to give you the ability to filter the, the list based on very specific criteria.
Jordan, I have a question.
Yeah.
Required by what column? It currently lists legislative or administrative rules. Does it actually call out which one?
That's a good question.
Like the, what rule, administrative rule number?
Yeah, so that's a great question. When we think about the two data tools, this, the data table would not provide that specific information. But through conversations with Departments, staff did their homework to be able to answer these questions, and in many cases identified specific originating, whether it's Oregon revised statutes or it's something in Charter. And so if we go to the next tool, the service level summary is sort of that capture of all that information for a particular service. And so how you might use those two together is you might have done what you just did, look at that table and say, oh, wow, this one's required by legislative or administrative rules. I wonder if I can learn more about where specifically. And so the service level summary here has some note spaces where, when we could, we ask Departments to provide that level of detail.
And it would be available, like you could dig into that if we had questions about it, but it's not necessarily just immediately documented in the report.
Yeah, and that, I'm only showing kind of a snapshot of one for illustrative purposes, so. That information's housed in the, the tool.
And you have, you have full access to the tool this afternoon when I send it.
So you're saying the citation to what specific rules is in the tool or not?
Where staff could call it out.
It is called.
It's, it's included as a note. So if you see on the screen, you know, this column here asking, why is the service being provided? Has a check mark next to legislative or administrative rules and contractual agreements. And in this particular case, there was no clear citation that was included. There are others where there's a note clarifying where specifically.
How do we double-check if it's legislative or administrative? Like, how do we check that checkbox? The check mark?
Yeah, so one of.
Not that I'm not believing the staff, but I think part of the desired outcome for this was also to identify, like, the mandated services, which administrative rules are mandated this. And that in the future, if there is an opportunity for process improvement, then County Administrator or somebody could say, oh, we need to have a conversation with our legislative delegations to amend this because it's detrimentally or negatively impacting Washington County. So but what I hear you saying is that where staff could identify it is identified, but there are opportunities, there are spaces that will say legislative checkmark, but there might not be more information other than that. Fair?
Right, and, and depending on the particular service, it may be because there's, it's complicated to be able to summarize in a snapshot. And so when we talk about use cases, one of the limitations of the data is that it is self-reported. And in many cases, the, the actual requirement is, is very complicated and complex to summarize in a bullet point, for example. And so where it was clear, we tried to include it as appropriate. We let Departments kind of guide us on what felt representative or not, wanting to make sure that, that this tool provided sort of a starting point for further inquiry and let, let you hone in on specific questions.
Thank you.
Yep. So, you know, when you see the, the full data picture, there, there are a lot of different data points. And so just to illustrate sort of what the data can look like or, or does look like at a countywide level, we've provided some really high-level, some high-level takeaways from our, from our data. And, you know, one of the things to remember, one of the limitations of this is that this was a point in time for the county. And so the, the answers are from a fiscal year 2023 standpoint. It's important to keep that in mind. But when we ask questions of the, the county, how many of your services are required? You see the top bar, says out of the 297, 220 of those services were reported as being required by some, by some mandate or some requirement, versus 77 that are provided for some other reason. And so at the bottom of the screen here, we asked follow-up questions for those services that are required in some way, to understand who's the source of those requirements. So on the left, you can see here, and, and these are select all that apply, to be able to capture some of those multifaceted requirements that services have. And so out of those 220, 153 in some way have some requirement from the state. 60 have some origination with, with your Board, whether it's through the adoption of service plans or, or agreements in some way. 59 from the, the federal level, 26 inter-local or inter-agency agreements, and then sort of down, down the list from there. And then when we ask follow-up questions on what type of service requirement, you can see at the bottom, 177 in some way have legislative or administrative rule behind them. 86 have, have a contractual agreement in place, 42, some financial obligations, some requirement resulting from funds received. And then 14, these, remember fiscal year 23 here, executive orders at the state or local level. And then other 19 are specific, whether they are in a service plan that's been adopted somewhere or, or have some other form of requirement that, that doesn't fit into one of these buckets. For the 77 that did not have one of those requirements behind them, we asked, well, then, then why is the service provided? And you can see some of the, the answers that were, were built into the survey. 61 said that there's a need identified in some way by a best practice. 33 identified the need through some operational or strategic plan. 15 identified using data-informed analysis or some evaluation. And then 12 identified by business continuity or emergency plan. 10, other, generally those are very specific operational reasons. So this is an area where if you wanted to understand what those operational reasons are, the service level summary provides you that. And then nine identified by some community assessment.
Obviously, they could answer more than once.
Yeah.
So is that why that slide is different than what's on page 10?
Page 10 being?
I'm just looking at the report because the slides weren't available previous.
Oh, yeah, there, there was one correction to that chart, I believe, since the publishing of that. Oh yeah, there, there was one correction to that chart, I believe, since the publishing of that. So that will be updated.
So the report will be updated. Okay.
When it comes to, to funding, the, the high level questions are, you know, how much does the service cost approximately? And approximately how much of the service is funded by a general fund? And so, um, because we asked departments to identify services outside of organizational and or budget structures, uh, in, in many cases, we asked people to estimate to the best of their ability, the approximate cost for providing service. And so we've used some cost ranges to quantify and bucket costs for providing services. And, um, similarly with general fund, we asked departments to estimate for us the, the approximate percentage of funding, um, from the general fund supporting those.
You weren't going for like exact percentages. You were going for approximately.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. And so i- if you look at what that data looks like, um, at a, at a high level, it gives you an idea of the number of services that fit into each of these cost ranges. And so, um, if you look just at the total bar at the bottom, you see that there's approximately 110, a little less services being provided out of that 297 that cost somewhere between two, zero and $250,000. And the bar is colored according to an approximation of the percent of general fund being used to, to support those services. So you can see the green in this case is approximately, um, 40 of those services that cost between zero and $250,000 are supported at around 100% from general fund. And, um, you know, just from a, from a visual, this is the data at a very high level. There's more information if you wanted to drill specifically into services. Also related to funding i- is help us understand what the external revenue sources are that are being used to provide services. And so, um, we have an approximation of how much is being provided, but at a countywide level, this is just a tally of the number of services that report funding at some level from each of these sources. So you can see at the top, 103 services reporting some funds from the state. 98 are reporting that, um, no external revenue sources outside of the county are being, are being provided. And then 62 receiving federal funds in some way, 59 use these fine citations. Other include things like system development charges, local improvement districts, um, very specific fees that, um, were determined to be called out separately for a reason, those sorts of things. And then, um, you see some of the levies, intergovernmental payments, funds from Metro, private sources, et cetera. For service delivery, um, it's understanding who's being provided the services. And so, um, again, this was a select all that apply, and in some cases multiple, um, community groups or individuals are, are being provided service. And so you can see here at the bottom that 206 of those services are being provided to the community in some way. 60 are being provided to other agencies, 19 to, to for-profit organizations and 37 to not-for-profit organizations. And then when we asked, how many of the services are you, is the county providing directly versus contracting in some way? 91 versus 122 of those, of services provided externally are being provided in that way. And so these numbers don't equate to the 297 because this, this line of questioning didn't apply to internal services. And similarly for geography, which is focused on those externally provided services, the question of, well, where, where are these services being provided? 171 being provided countywide and 42 were reported as being provided to some specific geographies. And so on the right is a breakout of, um, the times of those 42 services staff reported these as the primary or the areas being provided those services. So you can see here that 33 provided to unincorporated versus 20 to incorporated. And then, um, some tallies of urban versus rural where it was appropriate. So this is one.
I'm a little confused by these labels. Um, so special districts, I understand. There's incorporated and unincorporated. But if I, where I get confused is how do we relate urban to incorporated and unincorporated? And then how do we relate rural to unincorporated? I didn't find that explained.
Yeah. So it's a great question because, um, we went back and forth on which of these were relevant for services and, and they both are in different ways. And so this is where looking at an individual service and how the answered questions could provide some more information. So for example, some services are provided to unincorporated areas, but also provide service in urban areas. So, um, where, where it was necessary, we tried to add some detail to that. But these, these aren't mutually exclusive answers. These are select all that may apply. And when you think about, um, services that are provided geographically in different parts of the county, there are places where multiple of those may apply to, to how you characterize the areas being provided service.
So something that's provided everywhere in the county equally would have been reported in these categories in incorporated and unincorporated and urban and rural?
No, they, they would have reported as the 171 saying.
That are everywhere.
Providing it countywide.
Okay.
The, the graph on the right, and thank you for asking, is just a more specific breakout of those 42 that are not providing the service countywide.
Okay.
Can staff have a definition of rural, urban so that they can actually pinpoint?
Yeah.
Answer these questions?
Yeah. Yeah. We, when we rolled out the survey, um, to, to staff, we created, um, a guide that tried to clarify the intent of questions, the best of our ability, bring everybody to the same point of understanding. Um, but, but the data is still self-reported.
Is there a way to disaggregate these numbers? And I understand a little bit more of the 33 versus the 17 or the, any of the, on the, my right. Is there an opportunity to disaggregate, understand more of what those, for example, the unincorporated, the 33 services reported, self-reported? What are those services? Is there an opportunity to understand or it's just a, the, the data source that?
You could drill into that with the tool, right?
Right.
Bang?
Yeah.
You can say, I want to see those 33 and it'll spit it out.
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll know, and we can ask questions. Why are these? Okay.
Yeah.
More, more work to, okay. I think the one that is confusing is the unincorporated areas within the county. Because we've been very clear to say incorporated is cities and cities are urban. Okay. Um, and unincorporated can apply to the urban unincorporated areas and rural areas. But you have rural as a separate category.
Yeah, it's really sort of an add to the other categories. I'd have to go look. We could filter to see if there were any services that are only exclusively provided to rural areas.
Well, if we get access, we can.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to remind the board that after today's presentation, Marnie will be sending out the full spreadsheet to the board so that you have access. Uh, today's presentation was to talk through the format and then staff are able to, um, have one-on-ones with you each individually to help navigate because it is new tool.
Are those already scheduled?
They are not scheduled yet.
So you, you're sort of hitting on, um, some of the, the things that come next, which is like, wow, there's, there's a lot here. How do we use it? What's the right way of using it? And so, um, to, for clarity's sake, we've been carrying a, a traffic light metaphor kind of from, from the early stages of this project. What are the green versus yellow versus red use cases? And so, um, at a high level, the green or the, you know, the service level assessment should be used for these purposes. Is anytime you're using the information to build a common understanding or awareness about services and their service level characteristics. So there are, um, all kinds of things you could learn, but questions like which services are provided to specific geographic areas, some of the things we were just talking about. Which services across the county are funded by specific external revenue sources and what's the magnitude of the funding coming from those? And then which services are required by different types of service requirements? Our yellow use case, it are ways that the data should be used. And, um, they are anytime you're looking at trying to identify trends or answer questions with specific characteristics, so multiple criteria you're trying to understand to be able to focus your further questions and analysis moving forward. So when we think about one of the major values of this information is it provides you a, um, a really powerful springboard into doing more focused questioning and study. And so there are any number of combinations of things that we could put together to answer very specific questions. But anytime you're trying to filter a service list or understand how many services across different departments apply to different criteria or multiple criteria is sort of in this yellow category. So examples are how many services are required by legislative or administrative rules and are self-reporting is fulfilling versus not fulfilling requirements. Questions like which services receive less than 25% or any percentage of their funding from the general fund? How many services are being provided to unincorporated areas and then what are they? And then how many services cost more than, um, you, you name a certain cost interval? And then the red, um, the red light use cases are things that, um, that you're trying to use this data to make final or, you know, make, um, final conclusions or recommendations about certain things like service levels, compliance with mandates or budgetary recommendations. And the reason that, um, this is outside of the intended use case of this data on its own is because of some of the data limitations that you've already sort of asked about. And I, I've started talking about things like that the data is self-reported and it is high level. Um, 297 services across this county are a lot of services. The, the number could have been much, much more. And so we had to identify the right level to answer these questions. And, um, in many cases that, that made staff have to boil down a, a complicated element of their service into a, a specific answer. It's also important to remember that the revenue and cost figures are estimated based on how the services were broken out and they were also a fiscal year 23 snapshot.
Oh, can I, can I ask a question about the fiscal, that, on that last slide? So I did, you've said repeatedly, it's a, uh, fiscal year 23 snapshot. Well, how, how long does that data stay relevant?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, I think it depends on the service. And so, uh, we're sitting here in very different times and contexts than when we started this work. And so, um, you know, I think if you dug into the data a little more, there are funding streams, for example, that were called out that aren't relevant necessarily anymore or.
Available.
Or available. And so, um, this is where.
Could even be services that were being provided then that aren't now.
Right. And so it provides you a place to build your understanding quickly and then launch it to more specific questions for, um, for the departments. That's, that's sort of the value, even though it is a snapshot. Yeah. So, so moving forward, um, how do we know that the information's going to be used in, in the near term? Well, we know that this information is going to be used as a springboard into some, some work that, uh, we will be coming back to you to kick off in May, I think on May 13th to talk about financial planning and revenue strategies. And so this information will be used to do a deeper dive into the risks and opportunities of existing revenue streams. So using the information that was provided to understand more about revenue streams and what services are impacted by them. It'll be used to identify the services that, um, that should or could contemplate new and alternative revenue strategies. It'll help provide information on mandates and untangling some of those complicated service requirements. And then, um, it'll also help to understand where some of the cross collaboration between departments, uh, are for, for delivering services. So, um, just as a high level, the, the data has, has used beyond, um, just the final data, final data tools and providing a, a platform for starting some other work. And with that, I'm happy to take, um, questions or leave before for some board discussion.
Do you have any questions or comments?
The, uh, I would just say that I've not been more excited about a large piece of data in a while. Um, I, I think this will be very helpful and informative as we are all trying to figure out how to move the county forward in a sustainable financial way or path, um, which we all have expressed a desire uh, to try to make happen. Uh, this has been clearly a huge lift to try to get into a usable tool. Um, and I just really look forward to benefiting from the information that's been, uh, collected. And I want to thank the entire county leadership team that's been involved in making this happen. It's clear it's been done thoughtfully and taken a ton of effort. So. Yeah. Thank you to the teams.
Anyone else? If I can jump in. From what I remember, this is a board driven or board directed project. Um, I think it, with the slide, the moving forward slide, I think it will be, uh, the consulting team, I think it'll be beneficial to connect, uh, with the board members. Also to get input, not service delivery level, but sort of how do we design these questions in the surveys? Um, because from what I read in the materials, I thought, oh, I should have been more involved in this survey development or that. Um, the, in hindsight, everything is perfect. So I'm not saying, but in the future, I like to be more involved in terms of how we design the risks and opportunities and, and everything that you listed in the full moving forward slide. And the thing that confused me, I was following the materials, but I think the answer you gave to Commissioner, uh, Teresa's, um, question around, I think it was, um, FY 2023 snapshot and the moving forward slide seems like a bit of a disconnect. I don't know how we jump to the moving forward if we're using a data point that is somewhat mute or obsolete. Right? As you said, some of the fundings do not exist anymore. So the data isn't. So are we gonna recalibrate and update the, the service level? Um, and have more current service level to sort of have the discussion about the revenue piece? And so I, I, it feels like I have a lot more questions for Marnie, um, to connect with, but I.
Actually, yeah, let me provide a bit of clarification. Um, we were able to conduct the, um, the con, we were able to execute the contract with Marina and company due to the ARPA funding. This report and the contract with Marina for this scope of work in essence is complete. If there are future scopes of work that we want to continue, we need to determine how to allocate the staff resources and or additional consulting time to that, uh, that piece of work. There are options to update and I think, um, we can have a follow-up conversation with your board after your board fully debriefs on what you would like to see, um, in the next steps. The next steps will take either reallocation of staff from something else to something and or additional consulting time. I want to underscore, this was the first time we went through this level of, and depth of information. And to our knowledge in, um, in the context of actually, uh, reaching out to other counties, this is far deeper than even the information other counties have too.
Never gonna have, I mean, we're never gonna have perfect information on this. Like it's always given the scope of how much it takes to do this and how fast the real world operates. Like we're, we're never gonna have perfection or accurate. Uh, at least to me, that's just not realistic.
And I, I just want to clarify that when we talk about this data being a springboard for the, the next step of looking at our financial sustainability, it's a starting place to look, knowing that some of, some of the data, some of the exact dollar amounts may have changed. And so, but it's a place to start and then update just the pieces we need for this next project that has been, um, funded and staff have been allocated to support that. So I don't know if that helps. So we're, we're not saying it's all absolute, obsolete. It's just, you can't just plunk it into 2025 and expect it to be 100% accurate. Thank you, Marnie, uh, for the answer. Thank you for the answer. The last question I'll ask is the, this tool, I, I feel like it's really, yes, the internal version should be more detailed and be able to distill the information and dig deep to further understand. And but I wonder, is there opportunity to look into, to provide a community facing version of this tool?
I, I think there's opportunity to look at that. Faisa and I have had conversations. And so I don't have an answer for you today and knowing that it's a snapshot in time. I think it's something that Faisa and I at least have been talking about, but what's useful is a good question.
Other questions?
I just have a few quick comments. There's a lot of work here, and I know that the value of the tool is also in terms of what information gets into the tool. So that's, that's another piece to Commissioner Faisa's question. I think that for me, before I look at how to drill into it, it, it is a tool that is validating the issues that we've been raising here about state mandated programs that are underfunded, some, some other issues that, that, that we've talked about. So the facts, so to speak, are here. I don't know, and what I'm seeing is the value at this level. I don't know what the value is going to be further down, but I suspect that it's going to be, the majority of the value is going to stay at that level for me. But that's, I'll be interested to see how it works. And I know that the delays in the process have, have been difficult as well as moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Willie.
There's a lot more information, a lot more static.
Yeah, I, I agree with you a hundred percent there. But the discussion has given me the opportunity to step back. And really what we asked you to do was come up with a first time model of what it is we're doing, what is the origination of those services and to help us get a first time qualification about the, the where, the geographies, the mandate type. So I think my sense is that yes, we need the study time. So that's when, one of the next steps. And then from there, I'm afraid you're, you're launching us into a possibility that I think we should avoid. And that is that all five of us use this for our own uses with no thread pulling us together, right? But part of that is us, the five of us have to bear that responsibility. So I think we need to come back together and share. So what did we learn? What were some of those questions that in getting answers from staff, we went, aha, some light bulbs went off, right? But also in going through that study time and interaction with staff, we also look at it from a standpoint of, oh, okay, we have some much clearer sense here than we've ever had before. Cause we've not tried this before. And, but here are some aspects where we might like to learn more. And as the county is moving to a new ERP, as the county has just recently put together quarterly management reports, do we identify that there's some further level of understanding that we see ourselves or future boards might wanting? This may not be the tool to do that. Okay? But I remember when the three of us started in 2019, we in preparation for a new proposed budget, we said, well, could we just take the current budget that you're implementing right now and go through that? So we had budget 101 and then we had budget 201, right? Long before we got the proposed budget. So we had, we had some good anchoring. And I think we will have some good anchoring once we've had a chance to look at the data, get questions asked from staff. Now, I'm not looking at that project that you talked about May 13th, thinking that this data is the be all end all. But it will have something that I think we haven't tried before. And then, once, once we have the opportunity of our own study time and can come back as a board and say, you know, really roll up our sleeves. Maybe that's more appropriate for a round table and say, hey, this is what I learned. How about you? And here are some of the questions that I benefited from getting clarity on. And then think about, you know, just some, some overall brainstorming about what would help us as decision makers? Feel like we're, we're making better informed decisions or we're better, better able to help work with our constituents to say, this is why we're doing something. And, and/or identify some future possibilities for different reports, dashboards or whatever. But that's, that's how I'm looking at it right now, that we've, we've, we're trying something we haven't tried before. Part of the reason why it took time is you didn't have a framework to build from, you had to create it.
Chair, if I can just build on that, we're, we're a county, 2,400 employees, many services. So this isn't just about like the county administrator, and I'm just highlighting myself, has not done this before. Those 24 employee departments, divisions have not done this before. So as, as for a future roundtable, we have learnings from staff as far as the amount of time that it actually took to do this. Because in many cases, the tracking of who it serves, who has determined a mandate or, or an executive order, that, that full track that Jordan had outlined, we have never gone through that exercise before.
Is that something that the leadership team and/or, I mean, I don't, I only know the county organization I'm interacting, I mean, the team members I'm interacting with. Are there analytics folks embedded in some of these departments that maybe along with their leaders in the departments should be? I hope this information is not just for the board. I hope this can be used by the assistant county administrators, by you, but I mean, like, I, I, I guess I'm wondering, there's, there's what we conclude from the data, but I hope there's also learnings or things that may be surprising to all, all of you as well, just because of how complex this is. Is there, is that part of what is being done here too?
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. I think that, yes, we have really amazing analysts out in the departments. And I think, you know, as you're, as we sit together and you can dig into the service assessment, you will see the vast amount of data that our departments now have. And, you know, it really gives us the opportunity as, as we're looking at service changes or what the future looks like, to look back. So it's always good, what was the history and to look back and to analyze the data and to build opportunities moving forward. I think the other benefit that I heard from our county leadership team was learning about each other's services, because often we're so focused on what we do. And sometimes that's to the level of the service that folks saw it as a great opportunity to look across the county and see what are all the different services? And sometimes that's an opportunity to make connections. So I think it, it is useful. But also we're just remembering that, you know, that there were some limitations. It was a learning experience. It was the first time that we've done this, this, to this comprehensive level. And so, you know, just remembering what those limitations are and what those learnings were moving forward. To add to what Marnie said, well, on the slide, it's cautioned, using the service level for prioritization or budget decision-making. I can assure the board that departments did use this in developing their budget scenarios and determining, and determining services and service level. So it was, it has been extremely
It helped inform.
I mean, even just for me, from HHS, I got a spreadsheet with, I don't know, six or eight pages of ORS citations. And so I'm able to go back when I have a question. Tanya asked me a question or when one of you asked me a question, I can go back to that specific citation and learn, you know, have a more educated answer for myself and for others.
I mean, to go to an extreme, when I'm thinking about this, maybe in prep for the roundtable that the chair is talking about, like, is there a service that costs a lot of money, doesn't impact a lot of people and isn't mandated? And if so, what are those? Like I would guess we don't have any of those.
We would have loved to been able to answer that question years ago.
Right, but we can potentially now.
Maybe. I don't know. I haven't had a chance to see the data.
Agreed. But those are the kinds of analytical questions I think should be being asked.
Okay, I'll work with Ms. Angie and try to figure out if I can figure out a plan. Otherwise, we would have spent a lot of money and the board hasn't gotten anything out of it. We'll figure out a plan to come back together after we've all had time to do study.
Well, to clarify the next steps, the next steps, Marnie will be sending the email with, with the document to the board. And and as I believe I've heard you, Chair, we will work on scheduling time so that the board can come back together on this.
And, and just to be clear, it'll be a link to the full database. So it's not a document, it's not PDF. Everybody clear on that? Great. Okay, terrific. Thank you very much to Steph for putting together this first ever tool and we'll go from here.
Thank you.
We usually take a break. We have a 45 minute topic. Do you want to take it after the next topic or before? Okay, we're gonna take a 10 minute break. We'll reconvene at 2:15. Okay, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. We'll reconvene at two fifteen.
Okay.
Very, but not like leading them yourself, yeah.
He's done this many in the last.
Welcome back, Missers and back to Chair.
Terrific. We are back from our break, all sugared up and raring to go. Uh, we're gonna switch over to another really light topic. No, actually, another data-rich topic, the capital improvement plan. And uh before I turn it over to staff, I just want to express a huge thank you. Our team has been creating information sets that we have longed for and just have not had. Uh, the prior presentation was one, and this is another. Uh, and we will only stand to benefit from further understanding about all the ins and outs involved in delivering the service to community, and how we, as a board, can continue to make key investment decisions to keep things going along. So, turn it over to you, Ms. Angie, and your team.
It's gonna be a quick turnover to John.
All right. Thank you. Good to see all of you again. I'm John Starr. I'm the interim chief financial officer. And um before I start off on the CIP plan and talking about providing more details, I do want to say this is an important document. It links in with our budget planning process and work and try to synchronize that better. I know my predecessor Greg Mutton started this with a lot of help from directors and IT. Um, and I would highlight too that the project lead for this is an IT program manager, Mr. Thuney. That's, he has kind of led this process. I feel like I'm jumping on the wagon midstream. Um, although I have sat through the process through the Sheriff's Office view of, of the process. But it's very good. We, we look at all the projects once a year, um and go through the cycle. So I'll talk about that in a minute. Um, I'll talk about what's new this year and then have the department leads come up and talk about their programs.
As you're transitioning, John, I just want to mention that I, I believe how we've started the CIP here in Washington County is a great example of one Washington County um effort. Um, a CIP is typically housed within your finance department so that you can connect your capital um expenditures with your, with your operating budget so that they're moving in, in parallel. Um, given our level of staffing and FTE in finance, and I will say, um, I'm not even gonna call it lean. I'm actually not gonna use a word because it may not be appropriate for a public meeting. Um, uh, IT out of their project support has, at this point in time, taken on the project management of this project, as we've learned. Um, uh, CI, CI of capital improvement planning, long-term planning within Washington County. We are currently actively working on getting to, getting to a point that we are going to embed the CIP process within finance, uh, because that's where it should be housed uh versus housing it within IT. And IT does not have the capacity moving forward to continue um with that.
I have a quick question. Would you remind me, when did we start working with, um, CIP?
Oh, I want to get to my.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to.
It was about three years ago, and this is the second full CIP. So last year was the first full CIP. This is the second one.
Okay, but I remember I, the start was even before that, so. The awareness, let's.
A year before, right. Yeah, um, I talked to them about this slide. Um, once we finish up department plans, we'll have questions and discussion and um and receive direction. Um, and seek approval on May sixth. We'll bring it back to the board meeting. Um, so the CIP process is cyclical. Um, we evaluate all the programs, affirm the priorities. If the priorities change, we want to change funding to go with that. Um, address that in the plan, uh, work within the departments, and also if there's community input, we want to take that into account and then adopt a plan. So, uh, very iterative and, you know, as we've worked to improve the process, we're, we're formalized as we go along and e-wickets and better linkage with our budget process. And I, and you answered your question, the second full one, I think, a year before that, it was an initial CIP process that was.
It only took what we knew about transportation, what we had on IT. And facilities, early facilities though, right? We just finished the assessment of, oh, we have all these critical needs, these urgent ones.
Right, right.
So last year was the, the first year of really having a comprehensive set. And Laurel has been to us twice now to bring the first comprehensive set of facility condition index. So that comes into this fold as well.
Yeah, I, I just, y- your board should be proud of your leadership. I want to actually refer, and I didn't know the actual section, so I was looking it up. I want to actually refer to the county charter under um chapter six, which is finance. Um, and uh, section sixty, under the general provisions, the board is responsible for the preparation and presentation of the proposed budget, or by annual, if permitted by state law, operating, operating budget and capital program. So your board is really living into um the county's founding document, the county charter. Um, that is very, that is in the same vein that um other um aspects um under uh that connect to the transformation that the county um has uh been under through your um through your leadership, establishing a true administrative manual, which is identified in county code. So this operating budget and capital program, that does not say transportation program or IT program, it is a capital program, or also known as CIP.
And it's not just a list.
Correct.
We have fixtures and we have this very good documentation on each project, which is very helpful for the community too.
Oh, comprehensive.
So what's new this year? We updated the narratives. Um, we updated expected revenues and expenditures um for the time period. And I would note, within the revenues expected, there's also a number of projects that are unfunded, so not yet secured. And so that probably should be highlighted as we um work to develop this program a little bit more. And how are we gonna address those unfunded needs in the future, whether there are more bonds or, or some other revenue? And that might be part of our project we bring back here in May. Um, capital projects been updated to reflect the project status uh and estimated cost. And then LUT has added estimated project cost to their spreadsheets. So uh it's progressing to get a little more informative this year.
Yes.
That is. And um, sorry, future, future CIP process and elements. Um, we're gonna continue routine streamlined annual process, so and kind of work through how we best time it. Um, right now, I think it's, it's pretty optimal, but I think it can be better optimized as we work the budget cycle. Um, with the staff that we have, it's challenging everybody to still doing a lot. And so pulling teams together um takes a lot of coordination, which the team was very good at. The other piece there is just updated the project templates, better use of space. Maybe we can include a five-year anticipated in the charts for each project to make it more readable. Um, and then Ms. Angie already talked about um trying to get a program manager within the finance department. And not just to manage this project, but also to look at all forecasting, to, to have a better um capability that can do forecasting looking forward and bringing all of it together, not just the capital, but other pieces as well, cross funds, that type of thing, to present a better picture for us to manage. This represents um the list. Um, looking at one point six billion dollars across the five-year programs. Would note, um, you know, we, we do have a one Washington County approach and try to maintain that focus. All the departments that come online and talk about the priorities, we kind of um take into account as we're building the program. Um, I also would note, it shows one point six billion, but there are a number of revenues in there that are not identified with the funding source. Some of them are big projects. One, of course, is a jail expansion, which is a large project. But there's a number of others that uh we need to look at. Um, number going into next, the next planning year, but then farther out as well.
At least we have some nodes.
Yes, yes, we do.
We have things identified, something we can work towards.
So with that, I'm gonna call up uh Ross, IT director, and talk about ITs.
So courthouse is outside of this five years, so is that why there's?
And we're just trying to get to the point where we hire a planner, right? Get the local match to go, get the state match to go with our local match, so we can start a planning program. So the state matches. The state match is in its third year of holdup.
Yep.
Well, that's, but that's.
Commissioner Willie, sorry, I put a chocolate in my mouth when you asked a question. Um, so similar, and I'm gonna compare it to the jail capacity um uh project. Once we had the planning started, then it showed up on the CIP. So once we have the courthouse planning dollars, then you will start to see that programmed.
So that million and a half, a million, one point two million that we have requested is not in this.
One point two five, that's.
It is in there. So hold that question, Jerry, for when Laurel Brown.
Right.
It's just the planning part.
Yeah, no, I was looking for the.
The planning, oh, I got it.
But we can't, we can't say when we're going to build or have even a build target till we have that match in place.
All right. All right. Hello. My name is Luke Ross, and I am the chief information officer and information technology services. Great to see you guys again. Um, Commissioner Snyder, I think this is our first time meeting, so welcome. So we have some really exciting uh things in our plan. Uh, it is a small but mighty list, and this represents just some of the work that IT does. Uh, we do have about fifty other kind of projects that run in tandem with these, but uh these are the ones that are included in the CIP because of the cost and, and funding requirements. Um, the, the big one up at the top, I think everybody's heard about this, and we've talked about this a lot. The uh enterprise resource planning um project replacement. Um, that is, uh, it's, it's great that is under uh IT's purview and we're kind of leading the project, but this really is a county-wide project. And it's all hands on deck right now. Um, we are uh in progress, um, currently doing some testing. And, or we're getting ready to start doing some testing and uh manipulating all the data and getting it into the system. Uh, and we still are on target uh for December of twenty twenty-five, and I think this really is gonna be a, a massive change for the county as a whole in the way that we can use the standardized data here. So, uh, any questions on that at all?
Ms. Angie, one thing that I hope uh you, you and your team have a laundry list of is after your go-live date, and I'm making things up as I describe this, I'm hoping you'll be able to come back to us in January, February, or maybe a thing with a quarterly report that say, look, we can now generate all of our paychecks using the new system. Look, we can now generate all these other reports using the new, new system. I want to make sure we celebrate. That it's not just a, oh, okay, it went live and we transferred everything over. It's a bigger deal than that. It warrants a bigger deal. I think it warrants a bigger deal, you know, so.
Yes, and I believe we have an ERP update coming to the board this, I don't have the date, but at some point. So we will touch on um the plan through twenty twenty-five and then thereafter during that update.
Yeah, but you're right, a, a massive celebration would be worthwhile because we have staff who have been working night and day through the weekends uh just to get this where it is today and to make sure that we, uh, we hit that deadline.
I'm also gonna add that IT systems and changes in IT systems are never visible to, to people outside of those who use them, and they're not even visible to the benefits for others that might use the same system. So I do think that it's important, especially when we have a price tag of twenty million dollars. I think that that's important to, for the public as well as for our, our internal users.
Yeah, and just, um, I want to piggyback on that point, just so that it's uh part of the record for this meeting. Um, this is our core operating system, and so it is how we capture finance, HR.
It's everything.
Yeah, it, it is everything. Our current Oracle system is no longer supported. It's no longer supported. So it is, what? Uh, twenty-three, twenty-three years. Um, so we have to have a finance HR system that's supported. Um, so this is an essential. It is not seen, um, as you said, Commissioner, but it is without this, we couldn't do our work.
Yeah.
I also want to just remind the board, we were very thoughtful in the planning process on the cost. While, yes, it's a cost to implement, we are actually reducing the amount of systems that we have. So the on, we're trying to cost-contain the ongoing operational foot, foot, footprint of the system too.
I just know it could be so less arduous for the team to do all kinds of things. So that instead they can be doing a bunch of other forward-looking things. So that instead they can be doing a bunch of other forward-looking things.
Absolutely. And it's been a real great opportunity for the county as a whole to look at the way that we do things today and ask the question, should we still continue to do things this way? What is the best industry standard practice? So we're seeing change outside of just technology in, in the way that we do business. All right, the next highlighted item here we have is the Horizons replacement. For those who visit our internal website, that's designed for county staff, that's going through a redesign. Last year, we actually had this projected out to finish closer to twenty twenty-six. So we're ahead of schedule, and we're actually looking at a launch here in June and July, which is very exciting. Along with this, kind of the, the same thread of how we did things in the past and how we do them in the future. We're adding a lot of new enhancements, so you can subscribe to different departments and other really exciting features that will hopefully drive engagement across all the departments. So.
That connected the internet, how does it, we just, we finished within the last two years, the, the external.
Yeah.
Website, and how is that, are they co-dependent anyways?
They're, they're not co-dependent, but our old system was built on an old stack that is no longer supported. The new one, yeah, it's, well, the old hosting platform and the way that we had.
Or Horizon.
Designed, yeah, this new Horizons one is going to be using the same technology that we use on our county's external site to make sure that our staff and, and the way that we develop design. One of the great things that's coming out of this is as we're learning things with Horizons with this new project and some of the technology shifts, we're applying those same things to the county's website to continue to improve those services as well. So. And this one, as far as the planned cost, it really is not really on the cost of the website itself, but a, a resource that we hired that specializes in this sort of technology and working in department or internal websites for, and they've actually helped some of the local counties and cities here with their internal sites. So we're very excited about this project. The phone system replacement is the last one on here. This one was originally in our C I P last year for twenty-six, twenty-seven to get kicked off. Unfortunately, our current phone provider this last year, N E C S, decided we don't want to be in the phone game anymore. So we're going to stop selling phones, we're going to, so that bumped this up to the top of our priority list, which is a great thing because now is the right time to be making that change. Immediately, we shifted and pivoted and went out, got quotes, and we found that it actually was going to come in a million dollars less than we originally anticipated. So that was great news. And with that, and, and moving around some of our other projects and priorities, we were able to cover the total amount using our existing funding balance without having to come to you and ask for more money. So one of the things I know you guys love is data.
How much of this is about purchasing equipment? And I'm thinking about tariffs and those things.
This is a lot less because with the new phone system replacement, there's going to be the hardware costs of the individual phones. But in going out and doing surveys with staff, what we found is there's a lot of people who don't want a physical phone at their desk anymore. Some of us may just want our phone to ring through teams or some other unified communications platform. So we're looking at kind of a hybrid model in the future is for our phone system.
Just all voice-over I P?
Yeah. So the, the plan is to modernize our existing infrastructure. And if you want to go to the next slide, this is kind of the breakdown of all the expenditures. But one of the big stories here, and normally in a capital improvement plan, we don't tend to put the operations requirement in the future, but we put this on here to tell this story, which is, we're going to see less and less capital. And we're seeing this year to year with our budgeting for capital. It's starting to go down and operations is starting to go up because companies are shifting to subscription-based modeling for most of their things. So even with Workday, you know, we would go through a massive replacement, be a big capital ask. And, and it was in this case because of the, the design and everything like that. But the ongoing cost is, is going to be, you know, higher than it was in the past for the subscriptions and things like that. So same with the phone system, less upfront cost, more ongoing subscription fees. So.
But given that this is looking out five years, Ms. Angie, I'm wondering where I remember long, long ago in the way back times, when we were interviewing candidates for your position.
Oh, I, I didn't know if it was my time.
And way back, four or five years ago, it seems, you brought forward to us an appreciation for how we are not in any, we're not in the league of local governments for things like data analytics. And so that has stayed with me all this time. And we've been building based foundational things that didn't exist before. But I'm wondering, is there something we need to get on the horizon somewhere? I understand, you know, it may be some big software package or something. And maybe it isn't equipment, but where will that come in on our radar? So that we know that we are investing, forward investing into good government, efficient operations.
So we, we are making steps to that future, and I do want to just lift up the I T S strategic plan, which the I T S team will be going through a process of renewing that strategic plan. Is that my correct memory? Okay, yes. And within their current, and I'm confident in their future, actually, they do have data analytics, data governance. Your board's investment with an county administration office within our equity team of a data analyst. Right now, we have one Washington County cross-departmental team of data analysts that have come together to talk about just our data in general. And so I T is part of that. And so you'll see more work in the future in that space. What is essential, what will, what I think is pivotal for the county is the E R P. Because one of the things that I've heard from individual board members and you collectively, I'm going to call it a yearning for employee, employment workforce type data, which would take months to create that. Also from financial reporting, it is very challenging to get timely reports out of our current system. So we have a huge opportunity in that to help continue on the path of data-informed decision-making from a staff level and for you from a governance and policy level. So we're making, we're making steps, and I'm really confident in the I T S team of being at the hub. And you heard Marnie Kyle speak earlier, we do have really great analytics embedded into larger departments. Our smaller departments don't have that level of analytics, and that's where I T comes in.
Couldn't have said any better myself. And as well said, and one of the great things that came out of that data user group that Tonya referred to here, Ms. Angie, sorry, is a data governance policy that was just put out for review from the rest of the county this week. We're, we're continuing to make strides in that area. Okay, that, that concludes most of what I had to say. Are there any questions?
No, I think we're all set on I T S for the time being anyway. One more to Facilities Fleet and Parks, F F P.
Hello, I am Laurel Brown, the Director of Facility Fleet and Parks, and I'm here today to present the facilities portion of the C I P to you. We're going to start with just an overview of our portfolio, which is approximately forty buildings that house very diverse service delivery functions that the departments provide to the public. The range of age is nineteen oh five to present. It's about two million square feet of built space, associated mechanicals, electrical, plumbing systems, all the things, plus the urban grounds and parking lots. And we have in, in the parks space, two thousand five hundred acres of public green space, associated recreation equipment and in, and some in-water structures, which are interesting. Our priorities have remained unchanged since the last time that we met. We'll probably be sitting in this space for another three to five years, I would say, but before we can kind of start ticking some things off and, and thinking a little differently about the way we move forward. Next slide, yes.
I was hoping that jail would be done by the twenty-six. Which building was nineteen oh five?
The courthouse.
The court, it is the courthouse. That's.
And that bookends.
Wasn't sure if it was.
Yeah. So what is in our plan on the facilities side? We have currently split the facilities C I P from the parks C I P. So the facilities C I P includes sixty-five million dollars of, of planned expenditures in this fiscal year coming, the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Most of that is continuing projects that we had begun previously, but they're just so large and complicated that they are going to naturally span multiple years. That includes our critical infrastructure projects that were largely funded by the ARPA dollars. It includes our continuing work to prepare seismic design and construction documents for the Walnut Street Center. And it also includes five studies addressing ongoing need for growth within the county. There are also forecasted revenues and expenditures out through twenty twenty-nine, thirty, just pretty standard in our five-year model. The Parks Division is focused on their capital projects that they are working on at Skoggins Valley Park. They have a total of five point four million dollars worth of expenditures planned this year. Most of that is external funding. One, oh, and they have, they're nearly complete with one equipment shelter, which is kind of a low-key project on their part, and moving forward with the Tuolumne River Access Project at Eagle Landing. Next slide, please. So this is the summary of the facilities revenue and expenditures. In my mind, the most important line on this, this particular slide is about two-thirds through the top section, not yet secured. And it highlights the ongoing need that we have that is not yet funded. That's the highlight of this slide, in my opinion. If you looked down in the expenditures, it is a lot of money. We have some time to get to it in this particular year, twenty-five, twenty-six coming. We no longer have any unsecured funds. I think, I don't, I'm not positive we could say that this time last year. We entered that fiscal year with some unknowns. So I, we are improving as we look into the future, we're able to plan a little better each and every year. The expenditures are, I think, dominated by the CAT projects, the Center of Addiction Treatment and Triage, which come on a line here shortly, and the critical facility infrastructure projects. This year, you will see that we added the Fairground Master Plan Phase out in twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's fifteen million dollars worth of expenditures there. And the Walnut Street Center seismic upgrade. I'm not exactly sure when we will be able to manifest that building. We did get some disappointing news about our primary funding source recently. So we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and, and look for ways to bring that important project to fruition.
Back to the document to see, like, Fairgrounds Master Plan Project is, is constructing something, right? Or is it redoing the master?
No, it's constructing to some things, actually.
So it's the, the actual implement.
Yes, yes. Last.
What, what are the?
Yes.
Multi-purpose buildings, open, flexible-use, multi-purpose buildings that I'm actually quite excited about because they will be, they will augment our use of that facility for emergency sheltering during wildfires or other flooding. Anytime the residents of Washington County who own livestock have to leave their homes, they'll have a place to come. And these buildings will make that more comfortable and facilitate that use. But they also have the opportunity to increase revenue generating opportunity at the fairgrounds because they will provide another set of restrooms that are, that make it easier to leverage the fairground space during the off.
Okay, so I have two questions, one comment. So the, the not yet secured, I like the way you said that because that's a positive spin on, oops, we need three hundred and twenty million dollars. Yeah. But down under the CAT expenditure, the, the CAT is fully funded.
Correct.
So where's, why don't we have a revenue source up on top for that fourteen million?
It is.
Come in.
It is baked in, into that list of revenue sources. So like some of the state grant money is going towards the CAT project, some of the, let's see, by scan down there.
But I thought it was like eight million from the state.
It's so many different funding sources that are baked in. So right now, I've got one point two five million dollars worth of state dollars. Without looking at the actual plan, I wouldn't be able to tell you where those state dollars are going to. But I can go to the CAT on this grand account, let's see. So the funding sources are federal funds, and then I have a general line grants, that's where they're showing up. So halfway through, you see grants and that forty-five million and thirteen million, that is all going towards CAT. And then also a portion of the federal funds line is going towards.
We just got a recent CAT financial plan update over the last. This week, yeah. And I, my takeaway from that, it may be wrong, was that the funding for the capital is done, and we've now moved into the operational phase. I mean, it's, the construction is still happening, but in terms of the financial puzzle.
That's my understanding.
That's what you're trying, yes. But I was looking at where the money was located.
Got it, got it, got it.
But it is complete on the capital side.
That's correct, that's correct.
The one thing that I don't quite understand yet.
And I, I'll just assure the, the board, as you're finding that information share, something I really appreciate about our Facility Fleet and Parks Department is they will not move forward with any construction until they know those funds are transferred to their department. So they, and I say that from the standpoint, there is not a, oh, we'll figure it out. And I just really appreciate just the fiduciary responsibility of Laurel and the team.
Show me the money.
Yes.
Strong internal.
Correct.
That might be a change over the last ten years.
So I'm on page one forty-five, project-specific expenditure overview, which supports that.
Okay.
So it's the more project-level detail for those expenditures. When you did the facilities condition index information with us recently, it was very impactful that we have a lot of deferred maintenance needs. Where do I go with that right now? Is that still a big, open question? Or did this five-year C I P address a little bit of it? I, how afraid do I need to be?
That's a really. That's a very philosophical question. What is fear? So I think that this C I P, this five-year C I P, it does directly tie to the F C A, the Facility Condition Assessment, that provided that index that we are looking at.
We're starting.
We are starting to.
Draw, walk, run.
Yes, correct. A really big example of that will be the work that we have in this, on this page in the plan for Service Center East, where we're doing a full building envelope replacement and a H VAC replacement on that building, which we've had for twenty years and not done those things. And the building was not new when we acquired it. So it got a particularly low score on the Facility Condition Assessment, and the, those improvements are going to move that needle markedly. In terms of seeing our progress, I feel like that's probably like watching the hand on a clock. It's going to be slow and steady. So next year, when I come back to provide you with an update to that F C A, it'll be two years since I provided the first one. And we should see some shift. This year, it wouldn't have been that interesting. But given these projects that we have on tap, we should move.
So I have one, one last thing on this page. I appreciate that there was rebuilding done on the elevators here. But every now and again, one or more. one or more of the mayors reminds me that we had great bonding opportunity in the jail elevator. And are we gonna continue to live with the current quality of service with the jail elevators beyond these five years?
No, the jail elevators are on a different plan.
Oh, great.
The, it is great, and it's actually a nice relief to see that coming forward in time. They are scheduled for next fiscal year, and where you will find those dollars is in the Building Equipment and Replacement Fund, which is populated not from this variety of revenue sources, but solely from the depreciation on the buildings and equipment. Thank you.
I have a question about Service Center East, going back to that. Does that include, there's flooding issues external to the building as well, but that does, I don't know if that's included here.
The projects that we have on tap do not address that flooding issue. The flooding issue is a little bit of a sticky wicket. I'm not exactly sure. I think how, yeah, we're, we have many conversations internally about the best way to approach that.
And I know Clean Water Services has been approached to as to, but there isn't.
Correct.
Not resolved, yeah.
So we're in the process right now of understanding the hydrodynamics of the area, which way is that water flowing? Where is it getting locked up? My understanding is that it's kind of like, in the local sense, a known issue. And it will take a lot of stakeholders to address it in that way. So because we can't really fix the water stacking up on our own, we'll have to take a step back and think about what kind of physical modifications we could make to the property that would be allowed because it is in a waterway, so the permitting will be pretty extensive, have some extensive scrutiny.
But it's a significant issue in relationship to that end of the building, at least.
It impacts the users, yes, it does. When it rains, only when it rains.
Purpose water management problems, some water.
Put a sump pump in there, and you pump it up onto the street and let it go into the Clean Water Services stormwater.
I thought, I saw Clean Water Services here, I don't know.
But it's not just the building itself, it's also the parking lot.
No, we're not gonna get into this project design here.
Yeah, it is the parking lot.
We're just letting our, our sheriff office, law enforcement folks, and our sheriff know that we understand there's a problem and more work to be done.
That's correct, thank you.
Can I make one, I think there's one correction you've gotta do on this. Your age two under.
In, in the slides, or?
Projects.
One forty-five.
Detail, okay. Your column years are one year off. Yeah, so you dropped it. And the reason why I noticed it is because I was wondering, when are we gonna build these multi-purpose buildings? The fairgrounds is fifteen, and I thought, okay, that's twenty-six, twenty-seven over here.
Oh.
That one.
You're right.
On the detail, it's twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah.
That whole column is wrong, and so the year before that is wrong as well, so.
Yeah, so spatially, they're correct, they're just labeled wrong, I apologize.
You just gotta put the right year at the top up here to coincide with it. Anyway, just.
We will take care of that, thank you very much for noticing.
And on that page, you have the County Archives Facility Assessment?
Correct.
Does that, does that include the, the articles that are stored at the Five Oaks Museum? Or is that, that's a separate?
This is just specifically for the county records.
Okay. That quantum hut building we saw at the Walnut Street Place.
Yep. So any.
You got our attention.
Yeah, yeah. That's a needed project that I'm looking forward to learning more. So on the Parks table, we have similar structure, revenues on top, expenditures on bottom. Here, I think I would like to highlight also the not yet secured, but also the amount, the percentage of external revenues that are generated by the Parks Team in order to cover their capital needs. These capital improvements are the ones that, they're just, very few of them, actually, that are quite expensive, and they are largely limited to the ones we mentioned before that are at Skoggins Valley Park, the campground, which will be a revenue generating opportunity, and the visitor's center, as well as the Tualton Valley Access. And the very far-out year, that two-million-dollar infrastructure project is related to their plumbing system out there, and we are anticipating getting federal funds to.
Which system?
The sewer.
Sewer.
Sewer. And water, drinking water as well, they're just water supply and wastewater. Next slide, please. Oh, that's my last. Any questions then, additional questions?
Glad to see we're moving ahead on that. Walton River Oak Rim.
I think the community will enjoy that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, good afternoon.
Spend enough time on LUT today.
We just haven't yet, thank you. Well, I'll just cover a few things about the LUT projects. So one thing that I really appreciate about the CIP document is that we've embedded a pretty good, high-level overview of our department and our funding sources for transportation, so that you get a high-level view of all the different things that we are doing and how we fund that work. So we, we do manage more than thirteen-hundred miles of streets and roads and a hundred and eighty-three bridges in that system, over three thousand culverts. So it does require that we have a robust capital program and a plan to ensure that we are maintaining our streets and improving them over time, so that we're trying to make conditions better for all of our community members and support the continued growth that we see here in Washington County. So this includes sometimes adding and updating bike and pedestrian facilities, maintaining and replacing bridges and culverts. And then we're also, of course, just striving to keep our system well-maintained, so pavements and, and all the various components of the system that you don't see at the surface level. Slide please, thanks. So here's from, from the book here, this is one of the graphics in there, and this is, we call it the transportation pie chart. So it's just really trying to give a sense of the various revenue sources that make up our programs. And then we've also tried to identify the primary purposes that we expend those funds for. So the blue or the left half of the pie chart basically is capital project focus. The biggest slice there, of course, is MSTIP, which is a general fund allocation. Transportation Development Tax and other system development charges are the next biggest, biggest slice there. We continue to pursue grants, but at the federal level, we were not very successful, even with the Biden Administration grants, significant amounts of funding available. Those programs were so oversubscribed that we were not successful landing any major grants out of that, with the one exception of the Council Creek Trail, which is a very exciting project that we're hoping to move forward with here pretty soon. And then on the right side, the green, those are the funds that we dedicate primarily to maintenance and operations. So that is the bulk of our county gas tax funding, most of our state gas taxes and registration fees. And then we supplement that, sometimes our county vehicle registration fee, urban road maintenance district, and then statewide transportation improvement program. Those are sort of hybrid capital and operation funds, so they, we do a little bit of both using those particular funds as the needs arise. I think that gives a pretty good, high-level overview. In the table, next slide, you'll see that we have about a hundred and fifty-six million dollars in anticipated expenditures for this upcoming fiscal year. We have a total of ninety-four projects on our list here. And then I think as you look at the five-year table, and maybe that's one of our future slides we'll do, you'll see a pretty large number there. There was a billion-dollar number at the end of that. But a lot, I want to point out that about more than four hundred million of that is past expenditures or current year expenditures. So really, as we're looking ahead at the upcoming five years, we have a number that's a little bit closer to something around six hundred million dollars. So anyway, so if you could go back, sorry. So we, we do have the ninety-four projects included there. And there's a whole variety of things. They include our MSTIP-funded projects, the safe routes to school, accessibility ADA ramp improvements, pedestrian biking improvements, bridge replacements and seismic upgrades, and some ongoing capital maintenance and traffic signal-type programs that are just ongoing and programmatic. So you'll see that a number of our projects are really small programs that accumulate to relatively larger amounts over time. We went through and updated all of our project pages. So I think you heard last year was really our first, what we call Full CIP. That was where we actually had a page and a description for every individual project versus a bunch of tables that had a bunch of numbers in them. So we've updated all of those, we've added a number of new projects as we had MSTIP three-F projects are now identified, so we've added those into the CIP. Lost my, lost my spot here. And so in the spirit of continuous improvement, we've also made a couple of changes to the document. So in the, in the early part of the LUT section, we added, I think we called it a table of contents. So it's a listing of all of our projects in alphabetical order with the corresponding page number. So just a usability improvement that we thought was really important for this year. And then at the back of the document, we also included a new table that tracks our project cost estimates for the various projects over each preceding year. So the estimates will change over time for a variety of reasons. And so, again, we, we know that your board needs that level of transparency.
Track that trend.
Exactly, so we want to make sure that we're providing that level of transparency, and we'll have that sort of historical record to be able to go back and look at how those estimates may change over time. And in addition to that, we also have a, a column of notes, so any explanatory information about why a project estimate may have changed. We want to just provide that additional level of information and detail. Oh, go ahead.
If I could ask, and I just don't know where I'll see it all come together. So for the, the bonding, so I assume that the funding will come in in FY twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yes.
Will that show up in the, the finance pages for the?
For this coming budget book?
Well, I don't know if it'll be in this budget book, but it'll certainly show up as a, it's a thing that happened in the ACFER?
Yes.
Is that the right term? Now, I can't say CAFER anymore. But once you have that, will it show up as a revenue source here?
The CIP?
Yeah.
Like, how will it be reflected?
Yeah.
Right, it should be a revenue source.
I wasn't sure if it would be seen here, or?
Right.
Yeah, you're talking about the hundred and fifty million.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for too, so.
Right, yeah. So, so the assumed revenues in the, in the projects include that hundred and fifty million dollars of assumed bond.
Okay, okay, got it.
I don't know if it identifies it separately or not, it's just a misstep source coming in, so.
Yep, but you have the, there's that whole project list.
Right.
It was in there this morning.
Exactly.
And you've all given us the opportunity of so much rich planning data. I remember the chart that you had that shows the sequence of finishing the three D and E projects and starting the planning and design for the three F's and so this puts it into action.
So Stephen and John answered how it would show us up in the CIP.
Yeah.
I want to connect that to what the board, how the board sees debt and the operating budget. That will be in the debt service fund. So you'll see, you'll see it programmed out in your CIP, and then we have to pay the debt.
Right.
The debt service payments year over year, so that's how you see that.
But MISTIP will be paying the debt.
Correct, correct, and I want to.
Yep, yep.
Could it just be that annual amount that would have?
Correct, yes.
The actual debt service for that one year.
Correct.
Can I go back to something Catherine said for clarification?
If I asked it, right?
Well, no, I want to know what ACFER.
Oh, we used to call, call them the consolidated CAFER, the consolidated audit financial report, it's now called.
Now the annual consolidated financial report.
But it's, it's an, it's an audit.
It's, it's an annual audit review, financial, all our financial data in one place.
Thank you.
GFOA had changed the terminology probably about three, about three or four years ago to be more culturally appropriate. I can't remember the full history of it, so I can send that as a follow-up to the board.
The acronym CAFER was a derogatory?
Yes. Well, so we're trying.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, I can't recall how.
Yep, yep. ACFER updated.
Okay, yeah, we could probably go to the table now. So again, as I mentioned earlier, so when you look at those numbers, I write it on my notes page, I scribbled it in my hard copy of the document here, but the upcoming five years is about five hundred and ninety-five million dollars in projected expenditures. And of course, these are rolling projections, and so each year, you're gonna see those numbers change in as we, as we know more each year. So in the first two columns, you'll see the actual to date and then current fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Those two numbers total up to just under five hundred million dollars. So when you see that billion dollar, I just wanted to remind everybody, it's really six, about six hundred.
Don't worry, our hearts are still in our chests.
That's great, good, good.
Speak for yourself.
And so again, these, these represent our best estimates for revenues and expenditures over time. The beauty of having the annual CIP process is we're gonna be back before you every year and going through the process of getting those numbers updated and making any adjustments that we need to make as we move forward. And given that we're dealing with so much, we're all dealing with so much uncertainty right now, it's good that we have that annual process baked into things.
Well, I knew I looked at the project pages, not only printed a certain set of pages to navigate today. I'm hope, but I don't remember the answer to my question. If I put myself in the shoes of the mayors or for some cities that have had a change of mayors, but they know there's this misstep program, and they know that they've got a really important project that was on three F, for example, will they be able to look at the five-year CIP and find their project, see that it says three F? And since these spreadsheets don't have that code, but they do have the project name, will they be able to see their project name show up here and to see how it's programmed in? So it isn't just a, well, trust us, it's in there, they can actually see it?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
I haven't tried to role model one of them and do it myself.
Right, no, that's a great question, Chair. I think as this gets back to our idea of how do we improve the usability of the document? I think that's a great question. And so one of the things that we've definitely done with our MSTIP three-F projects is we've tried to note that the project was proposed, in this case, by the city of North Plains. This was the Glencoe Road.
Okay.
Union intersection. So we tried to make sure that it was transparent, that this was a project that was proposed by one of our city partners in the process. And I like your idea of potentially even thinking about how we sort of make that even a little bit more.
No, no. I'm not asking for you to cram more data onto the spreadsheet.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just trying to think about, again, just, yeah, I like the idea of how do we make it.
That project name resembles one of these project names.
Yes.
So that they can find it themselves.
Yeah.
Teaching them how to fish.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm just writing myself, I had another thought about another improvement that we can work on maybe for next year, so. Okay.
Wow.
So just to wrap it up here, so I think, I, this is just a big lift, so I, I think you've heard that before, and I just want to reiterate that. So I want to give a quick shout-out to the, some of, this is not all the LUT folks, but some of the key team members that helped put this together. So Cindy Downey is one of our senior finance analysts and really is our backbone for pulling this together. Emma Ross and Kyle Seska are graphic designers who have done the full layout for the document and are really excited to continue providing that support for this. Melissa Deliser, our communications manager, does a lot of editing work for us on this. Russ Knobel, our capital projects manager. Matt Myers, a principal project manager, who's been heavily involved in this effort with us. And of course, our own Jessica Pels. And of course, our own Jessica Pels, who's here with me, um, really helping to pull it all together for LUT. So I really just want to give that shout out to those folks and again, to the theme in particular for just being our project manager and making sure that we get things done when we say we're going to get them done.
So the last question I have is um uh, when someone like a mayor or a city councillor uh goes to our website, will they be able to find the CIP associated with like the, the budget documents? Or will it live some other place?
Yeah, we will be moving um to including the fiscal years together. So both the operating and capital budget.
Yeah.
Um, in the same location.
Okay.
Through the Department of Finance. So that's the main, um, the main plan.
Great.
And, and I would add, if someone comes through the transportation projects site, we also have a link back to the CIP there as well.
That's great. Excellent. Well, this is an incredible accomplishment.
Uh, Chair, if I may, just because it, um, for your board and also members of the public, since it was raised, just the difference between um CAFER and ACFER, the change was made um in October of twenty twenty-one by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, um, who issued a statement. Um, this change came because um GFWA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, um, had learned that CAFER, the co- uh comprehensive annual financial report is pronounced the same way as a profoundly offensive racial slur in South Africa. The offensive term um um is known. And also there's a similar pronunciation that else has deeply controversial meaning in the Arabic for those who practice Islam. So that hence the change from CAFER to ACFER.
Excellent. So how do we go about approving the FY twenty-five to thirty CIP?
We will bring this back to your board on the agenda on the sixth of May, I believe.
You sure you want it on consent?
I agree.
Or action, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, these are kind of just regular course of business.
Thought this morning.
Right.
I don't think it needs to be an hour presentation or something, but just about there.
Yeah.
Yes.
The, the very brief history, we've been at it for a few years. What's new this year? Anything you're proud of or that you want to note?
I think it's important to, when you do that, to talk about the robust nature of the CIP, especially in relationship to the short, short, uh, its short life. So I think for me, that's a really important piece, is that we've gone from zero to a really robust and fully utilized program.
Yeah, they're incredibly rich snapshots of the work that you're all delivering and makes me really proud of the journey we've been on together.
Thank you. Well, it also does what I think I had hoped for, and that is watching if, if there's a slip, why is there a slip? What's happening? And, you know, just, just the true maintenance aspect of a CIP. So, thank you.
No comment, no questions. Good job. Anything else?
We're done.
Thank you.
Okay, we will next move on to our last agenda topic for today. Board and leadership communication. Who would like to go first? Or we could start, why don't we start with leadership communication? Did CWS? All right.
Okay. So on April third, uh, Washington County was designated as a storm-ready community by the National Weather Service. Storm, storm-ready helps arm Americans, America's communities with communication and safety skills needed to save lives and property before, during, and after hazardous weather event. The designation means the county has met standards for ensuring we can receive, share, and respond to hazardous weather forecasts and for preparing community members for weather impacts. This recognition is just the latest step in a productive and longstanding partnership that we've had with Portland Weather Service to protect our community. Um, I do want to note um that the Weather Service, which is a federal um entity, normally does um present to the governing body on site, um, this award. However, unfortunately, due to um in um federal administration, they're not able to travel. So our partners in Portland are not able to present this award um in person to your board. Um, I do want to move, continuing on um uh, emergency management. And unfortunately, we have just learned that our grant funding for active shooter emergency planning project is in jeopardy as the federal administration continues to review and pause federal grant programs. This impacts FEMA funding for the state Homeland Security Program administered um at the state level by our Oregon Emergency Management, which is the source of funding for this, for this project. Currently, um, the state is not recommending um that we do move forward with spending, even though it's uncertain at the federal level, um, just because there may be clawbacks of these funds. So we are pausing effectively the RFP for this important training until we get greater clarity on uh changes that um are potentially moving forward at the FEMA um level. Um, want to draw attention to uh for your board to Health and Human Services, uh, Measure One Ten funding, which uh Marnie Kyle had sent an update to your board um last week. After initially being denied uh any funding, uh, Washington County Health and Human Services submitted an appeal to, to the Measure One Ten Grant Review Committee. The Oversight and Accountability Council reviewed our appeal and awarded the Behavioral Health Division's portion of the joint application to serve as um the county's burn coordinator totaling four hundred and seventy-five thousand, but didn't fund any of our public health team's division harm reduction work. Washington County's Health and Human Services has made OHA aware of this error and OHA acknowledged the oversight and was able to include public health in its fun, final funding decision, increasing our total award from four hundred and seventy-five thousand to three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Since the word is still initially less than what we requested, five point nine million, HHS is working on a revised budget and scope of work and will submit all budget documents to eight OHA in coming weeks. As a reminder, your proposed budget will be delivered on April twenty-eighth and the proposed budget will be uh will include just what we know as, uh, what we know of as now. Um, and if there's any changes that need to be made, um, while we're working through this budget process, those will come forward um wi- from staff and um through the amendment process. Uh, but we need to work with the facts we know today and then make budget adjustments along the way.
Do you think we'll actually know that soon or will we need to try and catch up with supplemental?
Um, uh, I would say we just take it one day at a time and one step at a time instead of going through scenario.
Yeah.
And this um kind of meets what I've shared with the board. Let's not meet chaos with chaos and we can only base, uh, base our actions with the facts we know of today.
Yeah, that's why I'm not sure that amendments during the approval and adoption, we're going to get clarity, so.
Yeah, it depends.
Yeah.
I'm just going to call it, can I just say it depends? And will that cover most things?
So this three point two million is what we, we were expecting, five point nine million.
Correct.
And so the, so the delta there is the two point seven million that we're talking about. And is this, how is this, I believe it's tied to Senate Bill six-ten when we were looking at formula changes for allocations to the burn process.
Correct.
So, and we're still, we're still underwater on that side as well, correct?
Correct. Hi, sorry, Marnie Kyle, one of the ACAs, and you are right. Um, there, so now our organization, Washington County is an organization, um, is getting closer to the full funding amount that we asked for, which was the five point nine. Um, but we got less than that. But we still have partners that were not fully funded, that we depend on um for all sorts of services, whether it be deflection or services coming up um in CAT. So, so community-wide, we still are not up to full funding and in the organization, but we are closer than we were with the first communication.
And I just wanted to point out that that two point seven delta is complicated by additional loss on the, in the calculation side that I think is still under review. OAC is under review at, from the governor's office, I believe.
Correct.
I hope I'm following you, but yes.
I hope I'm following.
Um, and that concludes my update. Uh, we do have a lot of, uh, staff is coming to you with a lot of financial information given federal government tran- uh, changes. We're also in the long session, so um I won't ask today, but just it, happy to hear feedback from you at a future date or in one-on-ones. Just if there's the best way to relay this information to you, because it feels, it's always coming and it's hard to sometimes track um what some of these impacts are.
Um, I just wanted to say you used it depends perfectly. You are a lawyer, so well done.
I like to pretend I am.
The definite may be.
Yeah, could, could be it depends. Um, so, uh, good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Ward of Commissioners. I know I often use this time to highlight some of the work that you've already received um in the hot sheet communication, but I do think it's important to give credit to our hardworking staff in a little bit more public uh setting. So today I am going to highlight and raise the um motion for summary judgment that um our senior county council, Vom Sheen-Ready, with the assistance of our hardworking paralegals, was able to obtain in a case, um, a nineteen eighty-three federal civil rights case that was filed by someone who was detained in our prison, uh, I mean, excuse me, in our jail from August twenty twenty-one to December of twenty twenty-three. You may recall that was when we were in the height of COVID and this um adult in custody did contract COVID nineteen and sued us saying that uh his contraction of that disease and his symptoms were a result of our improper um procedures to prevent the spread of, of that virus. Um, so we filed a motion for summary judgment, which means there's no facts in dispute. So the court can rule just as a matter of law. Um, and we raised a number of defenses, but primarily that he'd failed to uh exhaust his administrative remedies as required by the Prison Litigation Reform Act. Essentially, that act says that you have to engage in your remedies at the local level or uh griev- the grievance processes that are available to you at, by the agency before you can go to federal court. Obviously, this is a law that is aimed to um correct mistakes at the earliest time to keep people safe and with their rights protected, but also just to not jam up the federal courts with uh prison litigation. So uh the court, uh, federal court agreed with us and uh awarded motion, uh, the motion for summary judgment in our favor. So uh we will continue to watch that casing because it, he could now engage in remedies and file again, but um it seems unlikely at this point. Um, I also just wanted to let you know that I am um speaking to Mr. Barnett almost every other week now and we're trying to get him up to speed on all the good work that you all uh provide for us and in support of uh Ms. Angie and the um, all the county departments. And um we're, Andy's also just trying to get to know who we are up in Office of County Council. And I'm finding these uh, this time really well spent um and really looking forward to him joining us in just a few short weeks now. That's it for me.
June, before we know it.
So what are you going to do with all your spare time?
I'm going to tackle my inbox and continue to do really good work for you all.
Good answer.
Practice that.
Okay. Well, you don't get to go last, but you can go fourth.
Okay. Oh, yes, I don't want.
Okay, so of the three of you, who wants to go first?
I will go, but because I may bail out on you, I have a four o'clock Zoom meeting with Community Action. So I need to get romantic here, but I will wait to see the good stuff. So uh just to remind everybody, like I did in the board meeting, it's April fifteenth. And um it, this day obviously has um a scar in my brain forever because uh this is um, this would be my seventy-fifth consecutive work day. Today would be, tomorrow will be the first day off. So, hey, I'm going to take tomorrow off. Oh, maybe not. But anyway, um, I've been meeting with um new mayor Banks, uh, Banks new mayor, Mayor uh Marsha Kirk, and just going over uh their huge ten-year plans that they've got opportunity to do too. Uh, do with uh the, the golf course and everything else. Been meeting with Executive Director Caroline with uh Salmonberry Trail. And Di Ami, thank you very much for joining us, which is still continuing to go over all the steps that are going to be necessary to build that trail and manage that trail. Uh, Coal Pack and Northwest Act was last Thursday in Seaside, so I was down there. Um, Coal Pack, uh, we have now appointed um our executive director. She was interim for a couple of months and now we have made it official. So she is now our executive director, doing a great job.
Does she have a name?
Sarah Lou Hee.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um the uh Chair and I continue to meet um with the uh Metro President Peterson's work group. Um, and so uh, yeah, and we, we just continue to work and see what, where that takes us. Um, the last meeting was actually pretty good and we talked about that already. Um, tomorrow evening, I'm speaking at the CPO thirteen uh group, uh, just to update about what the county is doing.
Is that the North Plains one or the Banks one?
The Banks one. Um I'll be at the WEA twenty twenty-five annual conference reception uh Thursday at five o'clock, I think. Um, everybody was busy, so I was, uh, so I will, will be.
Yeah, we're going to the Washington County Appreciation of Volunteer Appreciation.
That's.
On Thursday.
It's a week, that's a week.
Thank you.
Oh, you're talking.
Thank you, a week off. I was going to say no.
Really?
Yeah, actually.
That's the twenty-fourth.
Mm-hmm. I'm talking about, yeah.
Twenty-fourth is next week.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's going fast enough. Don't accelerate it.
Okay, thank you. I'm anchored again.
Let's see, uh, then this Saturday, I sent, uh, made out, sent you an invitation to go for.
Take a hike.
Take a hike, that's right. Uh, it's.
It's always funny to say that.
It's an educational mile. What, what's it called, Mina? Learning mile, yes. I, I feel like that's. Huh?
No.
No.
Salmonberry.
Salmonberry Trail.
But it's not through Pacific. They're doing Salmonberry Trail one.
Okay, so um anyway, so uh Anya and daughter Claire are going to join us on Saturday and uh it'll be fun. We've got about thirty people signed up, so it'll be, it'll be a good trek, yep. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, I think that's all I got. So it's good, busy stuff.
Great.
Yeah. Last Wednesday, I think many of us were at the Community Action Fundraising Event. I did a great job, I'm seeing. Uh, we all went to the Metro Council Meeting minus Commissioner Willie, as you were in or on the coast for last Thursday. Also had a prep session for the mayor's meeting presentation, which I think went well yesterday, uh, last.
Presented on the public safety.
Yeah, yes.
Levy pulling.
Sorry, I was mentioning the prep meeting. I was going to cover a little bit more of what we did, but.
Okay, great.
No worries, but that is, that is what we were doing. Um, I do want to just quickly, I, I, at the, the JCPAC meeting, we had three commissioners there and I, I guess for future coordination, I know it's a published, public meeting, but I think we should try to.
So I'm a regular attendee and you're the rep.
Right, so I don't, or we need to make a change. I guess it's not appropriate for the board communication discussion, but I do feel like we need to coordinate that maybe a little bit better, especially if there's a public meetings or a quorum concern there.
Um, it's calendared, it's open to the public.
Okay, so maybe there isn't, maybe.
I watched the door.
Maybe that's a non-issue. Maybe that's a non-issue. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Yesterday, Commissioner Fai and I did present to the mayors, the Public Safety levy information. I thought the conversation went well, we didn't get quite as many questions as I thought we might, we got some. And, and I think we, we had a good conversation there. I'm gonna be attending the Sherwood City Council Meeting tonight, just to do a check-in, just routine check-in. There's no specific agenda other than me asking them what's working, you know, how can I help, that kind of stuff. Tomorrow, there's a WA Board Meeting. Tomorrow night, this wasn't on anyone's agenda, I apologize that it might not have gotten out sooner, but I think the Sherwood State of the City this tomorrow night, okay, so Commissioner Trish are going, I'll be there as well. But just as a heads up there, and then from Thursday through Saturday, I'm gonna be at County College. And then on next Monday, as a heads up, I, Metro President Peterson asked to have lunch with me, and so we're gonna be having lunch next Monday. I believe the topic is generally SHS, but I didn't really get any more indication on exactly what we're talking about. And then I do have a Explorer Twalton Valley Board Orientation Meeting, that same afternoon.
My turn. Yeah, last week was busy. I, I had the opportunity to attend the Juvenile Crime Prevention Advisory Commission, and I'm glad I did. I learned a lot and a lot of hard data, I would tell you that, it was a, walking away, it was sort of like, take a moment in the car and sort of reflect back, and it piqued my interest, personal interests, some of the information that I heard, so I'll make sure to put it on my external calendar so that everyone knows, and I think it was on last time, so that we're tracking on whose attendance. And I, I, I wanna appreciate Chair Harrington, you, you were there, and I feel like you de-escalated and sort of, you know, sometimes some of the data, like juvenile services can get contentious, but I really saw, I saw some reconciliation through that discussion and bringing the group back, so I saw the value of having commissioners in the room. So, I, I don't know if I'll consistently be going, but I'll make sure to put it on my external calendar so everyone can see. And then the Metro Council Meeting, Chair Harrington, you did a nominal job of articulating the county's interests and comments and concerns, and what I saw was the ordinance still got approved, so I feel like we have more work to do with Metro. Whatnot, so. And in terms of this week, let's see. Next, this week, what's happening, and for, just for, for board awareness, last, yesterday, oh, I almost said last week, but yesterday was WCCC, nothing to look back on the board in terms of board action that that I took or any of that, because there was nothing actionable items, and there was a lot of information sharing. And then same goes for G-PAC, which is happening this week. But I think we had a robust conversation this morning around the letter we're gonna submit, and then I'll make sure to bring back next week some of the themes that I hear from the comments and call-ins that happen. So, to be continued on that, I'll look back. And that concludes my update.
Cool. Question, Trish?
Thank you. Last week was the Friends of Westlope Library Tulip Sale, they did really well, and it was a lot of fun to go and visit the people there that were selling the tulips. I also had coffee with Bridget Cook from Adelante Mu Harris out in Forest Grove to talk about what her plans are. I learned a lot about, you know, Adelante Mu Harris, and she talked to me about some of the thoughts for preschool for all. I can talk about that if there's interest there. That afternoon, I had the pleasure of speaking to the Tri-County Behavioral Health Providers Association, TCBHPA, and that's their board about some of our county's work in the behavioral health space to provide services, build physical locations, the CAT, state care, and our legislative advocacy. I wanted to say thank you to Mayor, and especially to make a call, and we were on the call together, and I had a bad allergy attack, and Nick stepped in for me, so, and then Bryn walked in with a glass of water, so thank you very much for that help. The last Friday, I had the Work Systems, Inc. Board Meeting in the morning, and there were several other meetings in the afternoon, including one with a constituent that we're working with through LUT regarding use of some buildings on their property. Yesterday was the AOC Legislative Committee Meeting, there were, it wasn't, there was nothing really contentious in the, in the program, but it was interesting to see where we're progressing through AOC on the legislative agenda. I know that both Commissioner Fai and Chair Harrington were on that call as well. Tomorrow, I'll be listening in on the Metro webinar regarding the Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Department Fiscal Year 2526 Budget, and I know that our own internal team will be listening in as well. I'll be going to the Sherwood State of the City address, as mentioned earlier, and I am gonna be attending the Policy Conference at WEA on Thursday, but I will not be there for the reception. Well, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Looking ahead, before we all head to the state legislature on Thursday, the 24th, for the Washington County Board of Commissioners State Lobby Day, you might find it useful to review the January 9th training that we had on effective advocacy. This Wednesday, Commissioner Willie and I get to have our weekly SHS dose with a briefing with, I believe, Metro Council President Peterson and maybe another counselor. Briefing, virtual, I'll be virtual, because I'll be down in Salem, but you're all supposed to be in the conference room.
Yep.
So, I'll be down in Salem, meeting with a few different legislators. It'll be my last dedicated day where I'm going down there, unless otherwise needed by our staff. Related to that, Senate Bill 916 has been amended, and it passed the Senate and now moves on to the House. I've gotten a couple of different labor calls, I got an additional one today. Our position has been no unfunded mandates, right? And some have expressed, well, this isn't your ordinary unfunded mandate. I editorized a little bit there in that of allowing union workers to strike, that it's the uninsured payments. Unemployment, thank you. Getting all my "uns" mixed up. Unemployment insurance. And so, you wouldn't have to fund that, and it's like, you put, wait a minute, we're an employer, we pay that tax, so the more usage, the more the rates go up.
We pay it directly, don't we?
Yeah.
Like, it's not just, it's not even just a rate, isn't it a chargeback?
Yeah, okay.
It's even more direct than that.
Okay, well, glad, I'm glad I brought this up. Direct charge, got it.
And Chair, we can get you clarification on that, if you have any follow-up and
Yeah.
inquiries on this.
Yeah.
Words are not coming out.
Well, so, I just, I wanted to give the heads up, and I touched faces with Erin Doyle another time, from another union rep, and I think it's still one of those where our position stands, and we can't take on more.
And it's not different from other municipalities.
Right, yep, as we heard loud and clear yesterday at AOC, so. Beyond that, I'm getting going on some CWS organizing that we'll need. You should all be having regular one-on-ones with Diane Kanaguchi-Dennis now. If you may be having your first initial one, just as a result of our business meeting last week, but at least, I'm hoping in your second one, you will be sharing with her variety of question and, questions and information needs you may have, and so we can collect those up. We will be receiving the budget this Friday, and so then she and her staff are trying, have done finalization work on that, and then they move to the presentations and their rehearsals of those amongst themselves. And then we have the budget meeting, so I've, I proposed a timeline with her of your getting information to her, because we have to do it that way, our public meeting rules, and then have that come to all of us in a work session, so that, as, as a special CWS work session, so we can hash out some next steps. That'll probably happen in June sometimes, and then July gets really complicated.
Are you wanting us to be circling back with you to confirm that we're having on our regular check-ins with, I mean, I've already been doing that, so I, but you sounded like you may wanna know what we're doing or make sure.
Would be reassuring to me to just know that she has the list of things that have been on your brain.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, just, I'd say if you can get that done between now and the middle of May, I mean, I know we've got a lot going on.
I've been checking in with her weekly for a number of weeks. And adding not only the things you asked, but also my, my thoughts and perspective and, I don't know if direction is the right word, but maybe suggestions.
Okay. Cool. I only have a once-a-month meeting. We used to do it every other week, but I just couldn't.
That's the cycle I had been on, but I've just been, I've just felt like a little more frequent interaction, direction would be helpful.
Except that we do the direction part.
Totally. I mean, I'm using that term very, suggestion would be more.
I follow you. I follow you, thank you. Alrighty, that's all. And we're within your four o'clock
I know.
availability.
Since it takes you five and a half minutes to get home.
Uh-oh. Brother, we're home. We are hereby adjourned, thank you.